Order, this is the regular meeting of the Harrison County Board of Education, August 16th, 2022, will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no special recognitions or presentations tonight. Delegations, do we have any delegations signed up, non-signed up? Brings us down to superintendent's update, Ms. Stubbler.
Yeah, Mr. President, we have several updates to provide this evening. We'll start with the elementary. We had trainings with our elementary teachers and Julie Mancini will give you an update on how that went and how many attendees we had.
Yeah. This is going to hand you a handout what it is. But it was August 1st through the 4th at Nutter Court Intermediate where it was held. We had sessions, as you can look down through here, but there were 66 sessions total or 34 individual ones. So some of them were offered over so that people could get to see them. Some people just went to one session, which was two hours, some people was for 20 hours. It was their discretion. They can pick and choose what they liked. Long time ago, I gave you a thing that looked like this that shows you what we were offering a few times ago. Okay, so in the end, the paid presenters are right there in the middle. We paid McGraw-Hill for the wonder session, which are the reading, language, arts, politics sessions. That was $14,000. News ELA was 7,500. And the Think AUM for writing is the SRSD writing that we've used in the counting that we found works. So those equal $37,820. We had 77 participants. They attended 301 sessions, which was a total of 762 hours, which is $33,070 and 80 cents in stipends. And that's the $35 an hour. And we did the 4340 because of fixed costs. And that's where that total came from. When you put them together, it was $70,890 and 80 cents. Our feedback at the bottom, just to let you know, the teachers' unions have asked that we don't do it that first week in August because that is where they do be in camp and first things the sports start and they're already engaged in other things. If we can back some into the end of July. Teachers would also like to know, like early in the year, in the fall, when do we expect that to be? So when they're making vacation plans, they can work around that. And they'd like to have the registration open earlier in the year also so that they can, that's not something they worry about that last two weeks of school when they're trying to close down, get everything finished, these things, whatever it may be. So they'd like us to open that a month or two earlier. Otherwise, they were all happy campers and...
The only request I had later was more training on Permian boards. We had some and we're getting that for the elementary schools.
You had two every day.
Yeah, they want some support in the schools, yeah. And some of the teachers, this one particular teacher said she didn't get to one of the trainings because she was doing the others.
Right.
So that was only...
And any Justin can go out and do that individually, just like Jim and Karen came in the schools.
Is there any questions? All right. Mr. Durico has, I think, something for the secondary. And we did try to focus our trainings on materials and curriculum that we have already, not new things. Just we want to get really great at what we have.
So obviously, just the secondary is also August 1 through the 4th, that Monday through Thursday. The information that you're being presented will give you the exact sessions that were offered each individual day. We'll also tell you the hours it was offered. Those were either two hours or four hours. I think you'll find a couple of sessions on Tuesday that was just one hour. We did try to incorporate something for everyone. We even did this by allowing the subject areas to collaborate. Once again, we thought it was an opportunity for them to get together, share ideas, concerns, and so forth. So we reached out to a team leader, so to speak, to organize that. You can see what the cost was per day for the stipends. Just FYI to remind you, the stipends are $35 a day plus fixed cost. That's approximately $23.20 per hour then. On page five is a summary of participation or sessions offered and the costs related. I can tell you that we had 83 individuals attend. That's 83 unique individuals attend a session or multiple sessions for the most part. And the final thing, and Julie mentioned it, you know, the biggest challenge hurdle is when to offer this. Obviously, we heard that maybe August 1 through the 4th was not the best. One suggestion we had is maybe right before school starts, so it'd be this week. That doesn't necessarily help the people in the extracurricular activities that occurred in August. Once again, it's one of those things that we weighed this before offering this year. There's no solid answer for many one about the best time because everyone has a different opinion of what works for them. But definitely, we want to look at the date and see what will be best, maybe for more people and so forth. So that's the biggest thing.
What about maybe putting out a survey to the teachers and let them tell you and then look over and see what the majority says?
Let me add to that. So talking about your survey to teachers, so one thing when it came to developing these sessions, we didn't use the CE Council's survey about what teachers wanted. One thing that we would like to have is for more teachers to respond to that survey so that we can just have better data. But once again, then to add to that with what you're saying, that could be part of that survey about times to offer that survey. So that's a good idea.
Because you're never going to place everybody, I mean, you know, because of vacations and extracurricular and everything that's going on. So at least if you get a consensus of, you know, there, then maybe be able to...
And also to add to, one of Julie and me, a serious comment was, I heard a lot of informal positive comments about the sessions. Once again, I'd love to have more teachers participate, but for ones that did attend the sessions, it was positive feedback and so forth, so.
It wasn't mandatory, just so the public can know, this wasn't mandatory.
Correct.
So it got, you know, the low attendance.
It's at their choice, you're correct.
Right.
The professional development survey that we generally do every year, one comment is, is they would like to have a place to either write in ideas because a lot of times we'll put 10 things on there that we think that it should be, and they rank them 1 to 10. And they're saying that sometimes they're not things on there that they really, they're just ranking what we've put on there. So I think that would almost have to be a fill-in-the-blank or to have discussions with teachers, you know, instead of us putting the 10 things on there and ranking them.
And I work with the staff development council for that, and they're not sure what to do.
Right.
So I think we maybe need to...
How to get the best input, for sure. Because we do want to offer what they want, what they feel they need.
Not just what they want, but what they're going to be able to do well at, and what they're going to be able to learn something from.
I actually had a group of teachers in just yesterday. We were talking about Schoology and the use of Schoology, and I wanted each programmatic level in. And, you know, how do you see it's best used? And we had a conversation about PD in that group. And it's just they want things that are relevant to them at the time and what they're teaching in their building. And a lot of times, that's building-driven. So that was good input. I just, we have to figure out as a county, how are you going to do that? Are you going to put the funding in the building? Let them set up that PD and use it? You know, you could give them an amount to do what they need to do in their buildings, provide PD. There's different ways to deliver that. But that was their input, because they prefer to have relevant things, because every building's needs are a little different, for sure. But we do have curriculum out there. I think that if it's a new adoption, we need standard, you know, PD on that initially. But then it's usually driven by what your building needs are, which could be different. But it was a good conversation. I like having them in just for that conversation. And it was a good conversation with them. We also have an update where we had several things going on as far as trainings go, and we did have a special education workshop, two days offered. We generally offer that for new special ed teachers and veteran teachers or anybody that would wish to attend for that. And that was held here. So...
I can play in that. Yes, we do this every year. In the summer, we do offer a workshop. It's the same workshop. We offer it over two days, and you can choose which day works best for them. Of course, it's not mandatory, so we...
And administrators attend, can attend. We had several there.
So on here, you'll see the breakdown. We had over the two days. The first day, we had 52 teachers and therapists, 54 principals. On the second day, we had 39 teachers, therapists, and four principals, so a total of 91 that attended. The total cost is there, so it was $21,613.20. No cost for our presenters, it was just likely new teachers. I attached for you the agenda, so our overall agenda. Then the afternoon was breakdown programmatic by elementary and secondary, so I attached those to attendance for you as well. We focused a lot on VIVIS 2.0 and online IP because the VIVIS changing, it changed the whole way our special education teachers are going to view things, write their IEPs. So we tried to really give them the most information as a whole group and then programmatic for those changes. Because it's not, it's not there yet, and that's the biggest question. We also offered some specific things around our monitoring. So transition was a big deal. We did our monitoring last year, so we hit that again with the secondary. And we had guest speakers from Division of Rehab Services who came in and offered some information for us, which was nice. That was a partnership that we were trying to strengthen again that had kind of weakened over COVID. Any questions?
Turned out for special education teaching.
We typically have a pretty good turnout and several that, you know, ask if we could do it again. We do send out all the handouts that we provided for them. Those are all sent out to all of the teachers, so anyone that wasn't there will get the handouts. The entire office participates in facilitating. So from everyone upstairs, the coordinators, the diagnosticians, and the psychologists, we all own a part in trying to prepare for the next school year and what they might need.
How many new special ed teachers we're having? I know that might catch your eye, but just seeing new names. Do you have any idea how many new...
We, that attended here, we had three new teachers and one brand-new to teaching in general. So we have that. We also, we do a little fun, just to see, put your hand up, how many years you've been teaching. It was very interesting. On both days, we had special ed teachers that had been in the profession for 30-plus years and only taught special ed. So I think that's pretty, pretty nice to honor in our county that they stuck with it.
We also have an update from Joseph. We had secretaries in for a full day so they could really just meet everybody that was in, that's new in our finance department. So it was a good day. They actually got free lunch from, we provided lunch for our secretaries. It was a nice, nice day for them. So Joseph, you just want to give an overview of what you did?
We had close to 50 secretaries there. We went over, as I said, there was safety and discipline there in the mornings. There was child nutrition there in the morning, we went over different programs that go on with the lunch program. Safety and discipline, went over multiple items that they have with the secretaries. In the afternoon, we brought in finance department, introduced them to everybody. Also went over all departments in general, what we do and some different items we're trying to roll out. At the council table, we went over different things with the Department of Administration. We went over different processes, how their bills get in, how the E-trading process work with their bills. We went over multiple items and payroll of them. Time card, we went over a lot of different items, how time cards need to be filled out, how they can be verified and checked. And also employee absences and substitutes and all of those lines to help things keep them to move smoothly. And then also Marion, our professional cam, went over school funds online with them and how to get the school kind of job started a year and get everything in there and when they're learning. So we were there from about 8 until 3:30. Had some questions and comments at the end and had a lot of presentations. Very, very impressed. I used to go in the rooms and remember their talks and definitely with our secretaries, that's not the case. So they had a lot to say and it was a good day all round.
We have had some positive feedback from, a few of the secretaries have sent some emails in.
Couple of questions. One, your department, in finance, is it starting to smooth out?
We're working forward and we're moving forward.
I mean, is it getting smoother, I mean?
Learning processes, we're getting, getting things kind of nailed down and starting to work with the secretaries to make sure that that makes it run smoothly.
And my other question is, have we got a solution yet for this P-card business? I mean, I know you feel it's a big necessity, but at the same time, have we figured out who's been being controlled with P-cards and who?
We've started to give the schools a little more, you know, before, if the school didn't even know anything about the P-cards or anything in general, they had contact findings on them. We worked with the United Bank to give the schools access online to be able to look at their balances, transactions have been run, also to be able to do statements as opposed to waiting for them to come in mail and things along those lines. We're working on some different things with the faculty senate. We have some proposals that we may have to make with the Department of Administration there. But for the most part, we're trying to, we're trying to take down the questions that kind of come in for two reasons. One, it's a delay to the schools because they're just, we may have to call in and find out everything. So we're trying to give them access to be able to look up what they need and also to just get better information.
I just, you know, I just think that, you know, there's got to be some control with it. Somebody has to know what's being bought and where it's being bought and who's buying it and, you know...
Also looked at limits across the board because that was another issue that we've had is that limits were set very low and, you know, we were unable to, it was constant increases. And so we've looked at average spending limits and everything like that and kind of helped those out and taken comments, concerns from different departments because, I mean, our maintenance men are obviously using those on a more regular basis than ever, so they were contacting constantly for increases. So we were doing average spend limits for those and putting some safeguards in place, of course, but at the same time, giving them the ability to use.
Question. So the maintenance secretary is able to look and see as far as the monies that maintenance has.
Yes, they're able to look at limits on what they have. So like before, they couldn't do that. So you had basically the maintenance secretary, the transportation secretary, you had multiple different areas that they were manually keeping track of, you know, so-and-so has a $3,000 limit, they've used $1,100 this month. And it got kind of, I'd say dicey, but got kind of weird at the end of the month because you roll into a new cycle and the payment hasn't been made quite yet, then you don't roll it, it'll be balanced. So this way, they would go in and look and do a request of increases if necessary. We really feel that we've given them a better spending power than they have before. So it's, the P-card is there, I mean, it has safeguards in place already. So we try not to just strengthen or lower limits to not make sure they basically have to call every time they use it. But yeah, all departments are now having access to, we go in and look at balances that they have, what they've charged, transactions are out there. And then basically, when we reconcile P-card, it allows them to start earlier. And obviously, it allows them to start earlier because they can monitor what's being charged with cards and how do they have their receipt for it, do they have a purchase order for it? Items like that as opposed to waiting until the statement comes in mail and stuff.
Does that include the faculty senate treasures?
Faculty senate treasures and presidents all got access to their...
To their individual's...
Yeah, to their hierarchy scale. So then school secretaries and school principals have access to all the school levy cards and in-house cards. And maintenance got access to maintenance, transportation, so.
And that has taken some time, working with the United, get those, the training groups at, so that they see everything.
Before this year, they didn't have that. Even individual departments here now can look at the whole money.
Just kind of eliminated every call that you have through us. I mean, it's not that we mind, but it's just, it's just a, you can't get back to everybody within a timeframe of need. And so you'd have a maintenance man standing, standing close checkout line when your device card's not working. And so we'd give them the ability, before they take off or somewhere, they can check and make sure they're ready.
Who gives the approval in the hierarchy for the allowance of the spend on the P-cards?
That's Mario, personal director of the P-card program.
So every time someone wants to use a B-card, even down at the school level, the teacher school level, he has to prove it or is this...
He refers to the O.
Okay.
He refers to the O that is used for the purchase card.
So there's a peer submission request?
Yeah. I mean, in all the schools, they're, they're, they're not broken out to individuals, they're broken out to schools. So those cards have to be signed out and signed back in and utilized that way. So the secretary, the finance secretary there has control of that.
Is including faculty senate?
Faculty senates are there and there are balances on them, so they...
What do you mean there's? Each individual teacher?
Each individual teacher has there.
So each individual teacher has to get a purchase order from Mario?
No, that's through the, that's just faculty senate.
So the faculty senate can't prove this? And there is a minimum balance card.
Yes.
Yeah, we start with their mountain and...
Yeah, they're operating through it.
The only other thing I have for updates is I actually got to go over to Lincoln Middle, Lincoln High School and Big Elm. And you may, I know they were here when we were selected to be a game changer county. And it's a state opioid prevention program that Hazelton Betty Ford puts up in your package just to give you kind of an overview, give you an idea what game changers... I mean, we're just now hearing exactly what it's going to be. And so they came down, rather from Boston and I think Philadelphia possibly, the prevention specialists. So they're working with each of the schools. They did an overview on Wednesday morning with everybody. And then they broke out and did individual trainings, the first session, Lincoln High, then they moved to Lincoln Middle and then Big Elm because it's very specific. We did discover that the elementary school will have lessons. It's based around curriculum, lessons that they can use in classroom. Middle and high school is more peer training, correct? Peer specialists working with the kids. So they've set up the schedule, they're coming back, they will have six onsite visits with them that they'll be working through and training as the year goes on. At the beginning, it's really data collection. So we're working through, you know, what data are they going to be collecting and what form is it going to be, the whole, the surveys for the kids. So we addressed some of the concerns that we have with that. When we get more information on the actual materials, because we are looking at all the materials before it goes out, you know, these groups are not from West Virginia, and I made it clear to the, the prevention people that were here, this is rural West Virginia, it is not Massachusetts, it's not Philadelphia. We're a little different here in, you know, our communities and our families. So we want to tailor that to still give them what they need for information, but still put together a prevention program that is specific to us. So that was our initial conversations, and it looks, it appears that they'll be working with us. I think it's going to be a good thing for kids.
Who were some of the things they were requesting information was?
Some of the survey questions were, I think, probably not something that our families would appreciate without, I really, until we work through those, I've only glanced at them once, there's a big survey for students and looking at things that are age-appropriate. So the elementary lessons and things, we just want to be sure that we are, we have eyes on them and that we're paying attention to what's going out.
Is it possible, before we actually send these out into the schools...
Oh, absolutely.
...to get a chance to look at the questions that they're asking?
You know what, they're, I've worked, we are working with them, sure. I don't see a problem with that. There's, there's not anything that will be going on till later, we have a little bit of time, that will be going out, like the surveys for the kids, the information for the families. So sure, I think once we have a chance to review them all, this was our initial meeting. So we had not really seen any of the curriculum or any of their information. So it was a good conversations. We had about two and a half hours with them, three hours, and so we'll work through that and I will bring that with to you so you can see the materials if you like.
How were the participating schools chosen?
Well, we actually, I spoke with local law enforcement. We were looking at places where there was some, where there had been several arrests and maybe issues, substance issues. And that was an area that was brought to my attention, that we talked to Mr. Kirby and at the time, it was Mr. Leakey, and there were several people involved in that. So, and so we're hoping, I mean, we're wanting to eventually have this in all the schools, and we are one of the pilot counties, and it has to be done correctly. We don't want it to come out and not be done correctly and appropriately, so we are paying... I was glad actually that I was able to attend. We had our principals there with the prevention folks. We have a liaison that will be in contact, which is good. Mr. Durico was able to attend. We had Susie Hiller there. Our mental health person was valuable. She has worked with prevention programs before, so she had a lot of great information as well. And could ask a lot of the good questions that maybe we, and I didn't know. So, but it's a, it's a big thing. It's a big initiative statewide, so. And also, our project aware is still fully on at WI, RCB, and Victory. We received a grant last year, so we have two and a half therapists working in those buildings right now. So a lot of things happen. We'll keep, oh, I just will bring you any, any new information I get as, as we work through the game changer program. This was actually a handout created by Heather Stonaker to pass out at Family Day. They want to table the Family Day to provide information. So we wanted just a quick, simple, kind of an explanation about game changers. I think you're seeing it around the county. I know McDonald's, you're good at McDonald's, they're one of the sponsors. You know, McDonald's? There's signs, I see signs around, a lot of company sponsors. So we just want people to be aware of what that is. I think we're in, they're in 12 counties. That's all I have for secretaries. Oh, we do have Family Day. I think the invitation was given to you all. What's the date?
Saturday.
Saturday, yeah.
11/3.
11/3. And we will have several tables set up there. There's game changers, you guys are going to have there. David's going to be there, I believe, with representing and...
They have all kinds of things.
They might have 50 or 60 tables of variety of businesses or representatives, so I can't be all of them, but yeah.
I should let Jimmy, you want to give an update on facilities wherever we're at?
I can, I can.
He always has.
All these great programs are going on in Harrison County. I can say the facilities are in excellent shape. We're prepared for staff and student staff on Friday and students on Wednesday. Everyone's worked hard and all the processes are in place. Everyone's worked hard and all the processes are in place and the high expectations that the board has always had in the superintendent of our schools as state staff. So I think that we're, we're in good shape. A lot of good work that's been completed. Quick on Victory, the furniture's being put in and stage right now, the curtains are being installed right now. Bleachers will be here at tonight midnight and they'll start working on those. It looks as if everything's going to be in place, it's going to be tight getting all, everything where it needs to be, but there is a little bit of time before, you know, students have to be there. So I think everything's going well. We did have a pre-construction meeting for another port secure entrance and based on all the discussion, we're probably going to complete that over the week of Thanksgiving because of getting all the materials in place and onsite. And then they can take care of that when the kids and staff leave for Thanksgiving, that week, everything will be completed. When they come back, it'll be fully functional. So city construction didn't want to do a lot of pre-construction stuff that would disrupt the school day for several weeks before the materials came in. The, as far as the Simpson group and H-back projects, still waiting on the construction plan for McKinley and W Y K, but I expect that to come in any time. So that's pretty, pretty much in a nutshell, but anybody has any questions, I'd be delighted.
We also have the weapons detector training tomorrow. And if you can see them back there, that's, we have the assistance principals room invited as well and that training will be tomorrow afternoon. And we've also been again with the rank one group and we are piloting that in one building. We're going to pilot it to see what that software is and how we can use it best.
Did they select which schools were receiving the weapons detectors yet or?
I, I think he has an idea, I'm not sure. I know the training tomorrow and I'm sure he'll speak with the administrators to get an idea where they'll start first. And he has the pro officers coming in to train as well. So, and you know, it was good when he spoke with the secretaries because we tend to forget about them and it was a good idea because, you know, secretaries are there, they're the first persons people see and you've got strange people coming in or pro officers showing up to big things. So it was great that he had the opportunity to meet the secretaries and talk to them about the safety initiatives in the building because they are frontline and we forget, they just, people walk in and it's like, who are these guys? So I thought it was great that he was put on that agenda to speak with the secretaries and meet them because they are the ones that greet people and have the people coming into the schools.
Mr. Lopez, did you stay there? I know before you mentioned about doing another tour of Victory or anything set up for that?
Oh.
Well, I, I did because of the, it's just so packed in there right now and classrooms aren't really set up. But I mean, we can.
We, we went over, she went over and had a conversation with Laura Dick about, because we, you don't want to add more stress because, you know.
They had their open house on Tuesday.
So they felt like on the twenty-third, if you guys would be available, they could open the building, it should be available and open for visitors.
They might invite the community in to do an open house for them.
On the twenty-third because that'll give them time to get in and I know we have teachers that are working now, we've got them all over working, you know how that is.
Well, I know you all were wanting to have a.
So what do you think?
When is the next Tuesday? What time's the open house?
You realize.
Yeah, I think they're two to four.
Yes.
It's on Tuesday.
Yeah. They were talking on the twenty-third, maybe do something for the community. She thought there'd be too many people there at one time if we could board me, every parent, every kid, every.
So they're having their open house.
We could, I mean, we could, if you guys don't mind a little bit of clutter, we could do something Monday.
Monday or four?
If that's okay.
I think that was Laura.
Either there, I think what I was thinking was is, is, I mean, we don't necessarily even have to have it as a meeting because we're not discussing anything, delivering, but if she has a two to four, or what you said.
Two to four, her open house for students.
You know, we could do it, we could just meet up there for four an hour.
Just before.
You made on Tuesday?
Yeah.
Or we could do it Monday.
What was her concern?
Monday works. But if she, if she's having the two to four, then we could just meet an hour before that and run through there as a board. Doesn't have to be a, a notice meeting, we'll just, four if we're available before the open house and then we can, anyone who's staying there for the open house, where their parents are, then that'd be fine.
And then she, could she do on the next day, an open house for the community?
Well, no, that's what I was thinking was, the community open house, we'll just go now.
We probably want to figure out.
She wanted the first students.
Yeah. She's going one, you know.
When we were there.
That's why she wanted the parent.
After, after they get started, it's something that we need.
Yeah, I mean, is that.
You were the one that spoke with Laura.
Right, she's afraid they're not going to be quite all the way ready in the second. Jimmy's telling them.
I mean, they're not ready, but it's not going to be everything the way, the way you want.
Teachers, teachers' desks aren't coming there on Friday. We've okayed the guys work around the clock to get them in on Friday.
And that's why I said right before the open house.
It's been delivery issues.
If it's open enough for an open house, then it should be open enough an hour before for us, I mean, to go through it.
We, we might want to have a little bit before an hour because I know with majority of open houses, there's always like a line.
Yeah.
It comes so early and some people going in and not all their money.
We can go.
There's always a line.
So that might cause some controversy if they allow some people to go in and not.
Teachers are usually arriving right up until their parents.
They always line.
How about this, you figure out, you figure out what's the best time and then tell us what we're going to.
I'm sorry. I'm talking about the start of school. Do you happen to know how many professional teaching openings that we're going to be?
We're working on it today, a lot.
A lot?
We were looking at that. We've got one school that's problematic. We've got a lot of them.
Down in the middle.
Well, I was just asking because I was watching the news this morning, they were talking about nationwide.
Most of them have long term, so it's fifteen hundred statewide or something, but I, I think it's higher than that statewide probably. We were just looking to see in Smart Fund and how many subs they've already secured because we know where they're going. Did you bring that down?
No, I don't think so.
I think, do most schools have a sub secured except for the one building I know where it happens at?
Well, I know that they're going to be receiving their sub or vacancy codes tomorrow after the approval tonight to be able to put them all in Smart Fund. Some have already put them in Smart Fund and I know there are some schools that are good and secure, but overall not all of them have, so.
I think most of the elementary schools, I think there's one we're looking for a classroom teacher. If we're great teacher, I think, I think we're good.
When you say they found subs, are those retirees?
Some, yes.
Some.
We cannot, we cannot operate without.
Those are certified.
We absolutely cannot operate anywhere without retirees.
Yes.
And so if they're doing one of these specialties, you know, so many hours, they can't be a sub, right? I mean, again, that's.
Depends on what, yeah, if it's an after work, they could, but if they're doing one of the intervention jobs, they cannot. And there was, it should be a U T C update, did we have one recently?
No, no, it wasn't much there except, you know, the representative from Taylor County.
Right.
And Barbara, the mayor is officially retired. They took care of that and there wasn't a home lock.
It was a short meeting.
Yeah, very short meeting. And like I said, he just talked about their general plans about there's some asbestos and they have the money and they're only going to do a certain part of the school and, but they're going to, they're going to wait till summer, they're going to wait till summer and when there's no kids around, limited number, and take out the asbestos and fit down some.
Asbestos tiles.
Yeah.
Encapsulated.
Right. And so, so they're not going to do anything like that and you'll probably coast to next semester school, that's happening, we'll get started on the one end. They got, I don't know, I think it's like nine hundred thousand dollars, but some of the things they want to do, no ways of years, nine hundred thousand, want to cover what they need. So they're going to do the most critical and crucial part first and then reevaluate and see if there's more funds that are available to.
Anything they want to do is fine because we own that building.
And they're also.
They did H-back upgrades.
And they're still having problems with the Career Center Lake, I mean, it keeps filling up and so they're going to try and get that out the end and just water all runs right down in there at the end of the building, you know, it's like a lake. So they're going to get in, figure out how they can get rid of all that water and re-black top out through there and down on the west side. So it's been big alone for a while, but it's getting more, they're afraid that eventually it's going to get, it's going to come into the building and they'll have another mess.
And they did talk a little bit about Weavis two point oh.
Yeah.
They have, a lot of students this summer have applied, they have applications for them, but the way Weavis is working, they, they're typing lists and faxing them back to the schools because they cannot get them registered. So there's some real issues among all the schools. I know it will affect the things that normally parents would see or at rosters and registering and things, so we're working through it, we're going to do the best we can until they get this corrected because it is a state issue and we're discovering the issues with it. So the U T C, that was part of their agenda as well, Weavis two point oh. And we did have Mary Ann, our Weavis person, bring in the secretaries, the individual, if they wanted to come, it was kind of an impromptu thing, she sent out a notice, said, look, I'm going to be in the lab, if you'd like to come in and work with me for a couple hours on registering kids and doing that. So that was great, very appreciative from the secretaries to do what she could do. We had them in last week too, for a couple hours, if they wanted to come, so a lot of things going on with that.
Can we go back to the teachers and the shortages that we're having?
Sure.
I, I know that we have talked about this in the past and I know there are some ideas out there in regard to what we can do to help alleviate some of the shortages through consolidations or things like that, but what, what, from what you had said earlier, it appears that if our substitute teachers decided not to be subs, we wouldn't work, we wouldn't have it.
Be very difficult.
Right.
The field position, our retired.
Retirees, retirees, we wouldn't have to be able to run.
Now, we do have several coming back that have not worked for the last couple of years due to COVID.
So I want to think long-term, what, what is hap, how are the heads being put together to figure out what we can do long-term to either attract teachers or bring, you know, classrooms together or without overcrowding them? You know, what are some of the strategies that are out there that we're thinking about in order to be able to help address this teacher shortage?
Well, we're doing a lot of the things that the state's trying to do too, to recruit. There's just not a lot of people going into education and, and we do have a lot of buildings that require a lot of staff in this county with lower enrollments. So that is definitely something to look at. It would be easier to staff fewer buildings and provide services in that sense. I mean, that's one idea to look at and then we also have, and we're always recruiting, there's alternative certifications out there, but there's still roadblocks in those. You get to a certain point and then we find out there's another test they need to take. People that are proven, that have been working as Navy West Virginia Learn Subs, they're doing a great job and sometimes there's still hurdles to get them into a position where they can work. And I, and I'm not saying anybody can just go into a classroom, but I think proven teachers that have been West Virginia Learn Subs and have worked for us, they've worked under an administrator and they're doing a nice job and they're learning. Those are things that I think we need to look at or the state needs to look at to say, hey, if you've got a lot of good references and good experience on the job and they're doing a good job, you know your content, then that could be a way to possibly attract teachers. But right now, all our, the alternative certification programs that we have, they're still obstacles to get to that. And I, and I do get it, if you're a traditionally trained teacher, it's hard to accept that somebody maybe with just a bachelor's degree, but if they're, if they've proven themselves and worked for us, I think that's a way to look at it as well. So, and we are hiring as many as we can, I think we have four or five on this one.
And I know we have one more for the next one and I just received a call today from somebody who's wanting to start the West Virginia process, which they self-paced so they can do that pretty quickly and motivated. So we're trying to process those as much, as quickly as possible to be able to get them hired so they can get in classroom for additional support.
And probably one of the largest challenges is just, you know, the respect and teachers feeling valued and all of that. I mean, that's a whole big piece in itself. And, you know, things that we could do at the building level and county level, we appreciate them. I know they, you know, sometimes don't feel that or they feel devalued, but we could not operate without all of our folks in the school system. But I think just in general, that the whole profession has been devalued and, and the excitement of going into teaching is just not quite as, as there as it was, you know, maybe when I was going to teach. So for keeping the ones that we do have, there's a lot of draws out there now for them. You have a young teacher, you know, that's got three years in and then the FBI calls and they're offering them another fifteen thousand on the year. It's a tough thing to compete against.
Right, and we need to start figuring ways out to compete.
Absolutely.
Because it's, it's going to, it's going to really.
Now, we're one of the higher paying counties.
Yeah, I know.
And so we have gotten folks from other counties that have come here because we do pay more and we have more benefits available.
It has to be treated.
Thanks to our levy.
Well, I don't want to say it has to be treated as a business because.
No, I mean, competition wise and monies, yes. You know, I mean, just as an example.
Right, recruitment competition.
We're losing some accounts.
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah. From, from the teaching standpoint, I'm not saying treat it like a business, but recruitment, yes. We have to figure out ways that are within the law that we can say, hey, you know what, what can we do to bring you here? What, what legally can we do to?
We did with bus drivers.
Right, we did the same thing with bus drivers. We offer to pay them, you know, and let them take their test and then we reimburse them. So there's got to be something we can do to recruit and attract and then retain.
Retain, retention is a big thing.
But I think, I, I believe there's, all the counties need to put the pressure onto the state where the money, the funding comes out because, you know, they say, well, we're giving you this much, you know, it's not enough money to retain and because if I'm over in Eastern Panhandle and I can go across the border into Virginia and get paid several thousand more dollars, then why do I want to teach what I can teach in Virginia or in Maryland or Pennsylvania? I just think that, but, but it's, but it all comes down also, I watch the morning news, you all are at work and I get to watch the morning news and everything right now is talking about education, you know, and the shortages nationwide and, I mean, in, in every aspect of education and, you know, what are we going to do? And the first thing they say is, well, we got to pay them more money, pay them money, you know, and they make them feel like they're worth something in all the same town. Just because sometimes because you pay them more money doesn't mean that you're going to get a better job out of them. I, I think that, I think that there has to be a way that a teacher, if they do a good job, then there's more money available to them, you know. If they don't do a good job or they're not, they're just doing an average job, then, then they maintain that pay level until they step it up a little bit. job, then, then they maintain that pay level until they step it up a little bit, and then, you know, then they're given, you know, a bonus or whatever you want to, whatever label you want to put on it, I think that, you know, because like I said, most teachers, like I said, they, they don't have to go to work now, they're not required, but you go by our school buildings and those teachers that are really dedicated are in there already, not being paid, they're in there getting their rooms ready, getting things together so that on the first day, they're, you know, they're ready to hit the ground running and hopefully the kids are too. And I think that that's something that you have to look at, of those that come in prior to, I think that there ought to be some way of giving them incentive money for doing that, you know. I'm not saying you're going to, don't, because they're, they're twenty days ahead of time, well, it might take them twenty days to get ready, but, I mean, there, there has to be a, a limited number of days, you know, that you could, that you could compensate for coming in, I mean, and then I think they feel more appreciated in that time to say, "Hey, I didn't have to, I went in, I want to get ready, I want to, I want to be able to hit the ground running," you know.
So, who is it that would.
Not to change.
Sorry, so who is it that would be like, lead the charge as far as recruitment and that type of program or concept or idea or?
Generally, it comes down to the personal supervisor.
Since, you know, like universities.
Career affairs and also been in the discussion with the.
We've been trying to get more stuff on social media.
Going into that major, unfortunately.
It's not an instant thing because what you're recruiting, we've got to recruit them to go to college four years out because they're just not graduating. So, that, I mean, we can go out there and try to recruit every teacher, but they're just not there, they're not coming out of the colleges. We need to be the recruiter for the college.
I did a four hour West Virginia last year.
At Bridgeport, we had the Teacher Cadet Program. It was very successful, I'm not sure exactly how many students went through there, and, but we have several of them that are now teaching in the county. They actually got to do a student experience and things of that nature, and then they actually went on into college. I don't know if, if that's a possibility to reinstate the Teacher Cadet Program, I don't know if it's part of CTE or if it can just be part of one of the programs of study, if we're still doing that. And, but it was, it was very successful. The kids actually went into the classroom, prepared lessons, had a mentor teacher. At, at Bridgeport, it was easy because they could go to the middle school or the elementary school and just walk, you know, during the class period, so I don't know if that was.
That was a partnership with family.
Not, eventually, yes, but it started out as part of programs of study and it was one of those programs there, and they actually ended up with several teachers who are now in the county that came through that program.
We have still several cadets, student cadets, and they are teaching now as well.
That's definitely something.
Something to revisit.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's all I have for super tenancy.
Okay, wraps up super tenancy update, moves us to the consent items, and is there a motion to approve the consent items?
I make a motion to approve consent items.
Second.
They moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. New Business Milestones Music LLC, Patricia Smith, owner, that is a continuation of a contract music therapy in our schools. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
They moved and seconded, any discussion? You can see a copy of the contract there. No further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Best Life Therapy, that's another continuation, correct?
Is this continuation or is this new?
Luke used them, moved that contract.
It's a new contract, you already contracted. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve Best Life Therapy.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Is their scope going to be the same as it has been, or are there going to be any additional duties, any additional scopes that they might bring on?
They haven't, have they said anything to you about a different scope for Best Life Therapy?
No. Do you put some of those critical needs, like for speech therapists, we sometimes tend to have a shortage there, or say someone with an interpreter, Spanish speaking, and they can come in and provide that service.
I don't believe it's anything different than what they've done, I don't believe it's anything different. They've expanded their programs as well, they're growing.
And then they have, their offerings are, they have offerings for other things as well, and I think that maybe that might be something we should look at.
They are growing.
Are there any further discussions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Authorization of payment for private school employees with federal funds.
Yeah, what, what revis this?
These are the private schools.
Private schools.
What Lola thought we might have questioned.
They receive the equitable portion of allocations of title funds, all the different titles, and they come up with a plan of how they're going to spend that, and so part of that, because they're not our employees, in order for them to attend professional development, we would be paying them stipends outlined by our policy, we have little contracts that's outside of their employment, so it's basically stipends or reimbursement for capital, because if they attend a conference, that's all part of their plan of how to spend their equitable portion of funds.
And we're the pass-through conduit, correct, for the federal funds?
Yes.
I think of Lola as the compliance officer for all these offsites because she is.
We're required to, to give the private school the money, but they don't give that directly, they give by us, we're the conduit. Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second, any second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion, further discussion on that? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. No old business or policy updates, print establishment, personnel matters? Is there a motion on personnel matters?
I'd like to make a motion that we discuss two of the positions, the new positions that are posted on the personnel agenda.
Make a mo, we need a motion to get it on.
I need to make a motion.
You need to make a motion.
I need to make a motion to what?
You have to make a motion to approve, it's just to get it on the floor, motion.
Oh, I make a motion to approve.
And a second, for a second, so, moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to discuss a couple of the new postings that are on the personnel agenda, first being I am the CTE Coordinator. If there's someone who could actually, Mr. Rodrigo, if there's someone you could actually explain to us what that is, or someone can do that, or do you mind?
Heidi Griffin is here, so let me have Heidi start, if I need to help or contribute. But I'll, I'll yield the floor to her because she may have a better understanding than me.
Okay.
And the job description is online, it is a specialist position, a two-twenty day specialist.
And this position really is, there are two different avenues that this position would take care of. The first, and I, for the CTE part and the funding being dual funded, partially for the county and partially by the CTE grants, would be to work with our career and technical education teachers. They are under tremendous pressure to run a simulated workplace in their classrooms, they have to have those student organizations, it's not an option, they have to have those working within their programs of study, so your FFA, your Future Business of Leaders of America, all the different ones, and some of them, we don't have position, we don't have those in place yet, and the teachers need help, they need to, to understand how to get involved in those Skills USA, for example, or Pro Start, that's one of the ones that we could have them join. The other, the other part of that position would be to make connections with the business world, with all the industries in the community, and try to get those teachers and students to be able to connect up with them and, and learn, number one, and also for them to be able to do some advisory work as well. So, for example, a, a good example might be that we have a human services teacher at Liberty High School, and she's got a really neat simulated workplace, hers is actually more like a nonprofit is what it is, and it's, it's a drug awareness and drug prevention nonprofit. And so, the person who would get this position, they could work with the nonprofits in our community that are trying to do the same thing, and get them to come in, to work with the students, to help the teacher, to, even with connections to different things, you know, because like, if you're a nonprofit, you have to recruit, you're not selling your products. It's really easy to have a simulated workplace if you're an agriculture teacher because you can sell plants, and those greenhouses are self-sustaining and it's really not a problem. It's very, very, I don't want to say easy, it's not easy, but it's doable. But if you're looking at something like the kindness company at RCB where their, their simulated workplace, again, more like a nonprofit, is to bring awareness to, to students about being kind to each other, it's anti-holley, it's working with suicide prevention, those kind of things. What do they set? How are they sustaining themselves as a nonprofit? Well, I, I see that the vision of this person being able to make those connections for the teacher, help the teacher and the students to know what is out there and what's available, and so I just feel like this is a huge piece that's missing with our CTE programs, and I know several years ago, you know, I stood before you all and, and I know Mr. Amrick said to me, you know, can you get involved more with the, the community? Of course, this was before COVID, and COVID really put an end to a lot of that for us for a while, but I just, I don't have the time. I have a huge job, and this would not actually be anything off of me, I'm keeping all the things, same things that I've been doing, I'm going to keep the budget, all the requisitions and all the ordering, it goes along with three grants that we have, all of the, the data collection, things like this. This is just a person who can assist our teachers and make those connections with our community and help them to come together. Now, my funding is tied to certification, so the person would have to be a certified CTE teacher in order to utilize my funding for that half, but I'm really excited about this, it's been something that I've been wanting to have for a long time. Mr. Rodrigo, you last year said that my, my, one of my goals was to market and expand our CTE programs, and I was like, "Really? Really?" We've expanded them, and it has gotten a lot, lot bigger, a lot of programs and a lot of schools that we didn't have before, and it's exciting, and this also can allow the career and tech ed to communicate to the middle schools because we do have some fundings available there if there's someone working with the teachers in that, in that programmatic level. I think you can see them working with the elementary schools to get career awareness, you know, career days, a lot to plan. I can't imagine in an elementary school, especially like a large big L, to try to get a career day plan, but if you have some assistance, you have some help, then maybe it wouldn't be such a huge job.
I guess, I have, the only question, and it's kind of new here to me because the qualifications are on looked, I was okay with the qualifications of bachelor degree, five years successful teaching, or five years experience in business setting, and then preferred, obviously, the master's degree and certify, a teaching certificate, CTE. And the reason I was for that, and I know there were some, some other board members that were, weren't wanting the minimum qualifications in there, they're wanting the preferred qualifications with CTE, and, and the reason I was for opening and expanding it is, is because I think the important part of this job is the liaison between the school system and the business community, and I didn't want to limit that because let's say, for instance, Mr. Steele there is an attorney and he decides, "I don't want to be an attorney anymore, I want to, to go out and liaison with business because I have a business," I'm getting involved here.
What's it pay?
So, so maybe he, he decides that, that I have a lot of business connections and I'd like to do this job, well, we would be limiting him because he's an attorney, but he's not teaching, that's why I wanted to expand it, but now I'm hearing that the portion of the money has to be CTE, so then we would have to completely fund.
That, that was.
Or you'd have to fund the whole.
Yeah, that changes.
That changes it for me because I'm, you know, I'm for, we, we have four hundred to six hundred unfilled jobs at the airport right now that we need someone out there on that board setting there, and I just, I guess when, when it comes down to it, I always think, "Go ahead and do this" because ultimately, we're the ones that decide who the person is who gets hired so it can come back. I just, I don't want to be pigeonholed to where we have someone who may be great at CTE, but really not good at talking in front of groups to business, they don't know, they, they're not tied in with this business, I don't know that that helps. It kind of puts, it, it puts me in a quandary here, I think it's a needed.
If I can just add, I hear what you're saying and agree with what you're saying, maybe to summarize the need, obviously, I would tell you, we need to progress our simulated workplaces, and I want our simulated workplaces to basically be a business, so I need a person that can do some coaching with our current teachers and staff to get there. While they're getting there, I actually envision this person working with the businesses and the community, sitting at those board meetings that would be necessary, such as the aerospace, the Chamber of Commerce, and others, to make those business connections and tie them together.
Right, and I, but I don't want this person to have their hands so tied here at the county office that they can't attend a meeting of the Chamber of Commerce, the meeting, the monthly meeting of the airport board, the Economic Development Corporation and all that, that should be a top priority to their job.
No, no, I agree with that, you won't, once again, I think the coaching to the teachers is one aspect, but also that community connection is just as important, so it's going to be a balancing act, but I, I firmly believe it's, it's balancing.
We do have several businesses that have reached out wanting interns and programs set up, and one was the water plant, we had the FBI reach out to us to set up internships for our students to go there and, you know, work part of the day.
We had, we had.
And we, we've missed some opportunities.
We had Allegheny, no, Allegheny, First Energy.
First Energy.
First Energy, we chopped a number of years ago, and then wanted to do a lot of years ago, and we never were able to.
They want, they want kids to go, to leave high school right into positions, they want trained folks to go right into these positions, and the way the, Water Board told me that we can get a junior in high school, they can graduate and take a position there, he said at sixty thousand a year. Same thing that the aerospace people are doing, they want us to have jobs readily available for them.
What percentage of the salary is based on your grant? Is it a fifty-fifty split?
I thought it was a fifty-fifty split, yeah, I think that's what I initially spoke about, yes.
Heidi, who's been doing this before? Who, who's been in charge of this before?
This is a new position.
Okay, I know it's a new position.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's been doing it.
Okay, our teachers, we have teachers in the high schools right now.
Yeah.
That's been doing this.
It's been very pieced out.
Because if I remember right, when I first read this, it didn't have anything to do with five years experience in business setting, or, or five years experience. So, my thinking, why did we change that from the five years successful teaching experience or the experience in the business?
And this is probably from what I had been talking about for years of someone who's in the business community.
We didn't bring a job description.
Right, now, we've never had this job, this, you're saying who's done it, it's, she's saying just pieces, we've never had this position.
I know, I know.
And, and, you know, my, my biggest thing is, if you're limiting what happened, you know, what would happen, I'm not saying that the, there's probably a ninety-five percent chance that the person you hire is going to be a teaching certified CTE person anyway. My only thought was, and it was, of course, before the funding, but what if you had the person who was the CEO of Mon Power decides he's retiring and he would like to take this job and, and really get us out in the community, then we would be limiting, that's my only thing. But I think ultimately, what it comes down to is, it doesn't really, I mean, we can have minimum qualifications preferred, but we're still the ultimate arbitrator of who gets the job. So, I mean, if they come with someone and, and we look and say, "Well, that's not really the right person," we just don't accept that, you know, but you've got someone with twenty years CTE, that's my only thought, is I would rather cast a wide net, see what's out there, we did that on, we lowered it down on, with rank, we did that with our safety and discipline job, we went from twenty-five years down to fifteen to cast a wider net, and it turned out that ultimately, the person who got the job had twenty-five years anyway, so, I mean, that's kind of my feeling.
I'm looking at these functions and duties and there's twenty-nine of them, Mr. Steele, you might know one too. Or this guy.
So, if it goes out like it is with the minimum qualifications, then we have to be ready to pay the full thing as opposed to just have a hack.
If they ultimately brought, brought back that, but we as a board would have the ability to say, "No, we're not going to accept that," I mean, that's with any, what I'm saying, a posting is way different than the actual person that selected the position, so, and that's however you, you wish to do it, but the ultimate. And it's however you wish to do it, but the ultimate arbitrator of this is the board of saying, no, you know, that's, we're not going to accept that person into this position. That's, that's my only thought. If, if needs changed, then we'll have to move to pull it and pull that off there. But I don't see a problem, because I know that this is a posting, or this is a job description, and not even the.
The way of posting.
It's not even the posting.
But it's, I mean, try to create.
Yes.
Well, the only thing I know is, if you're going to have a person that's going to work within your program, and work with the community and the business world and everything, you know, you got to look, to me, it's very important that you find somebody that's very dynamic and outgoing when you do this interview, you find that person. If you don't find that person in that list of applicants, then you post it again. Eventually, you're going to find the right person that's going to be able to go out and communicate with the business world and the school systems, and like I say, if not, I mean, if you have somebody that's very dry and not, not dynamic, then you're, you're not going to, it's not going to be as successful.
I don't disagree with anything you guys are saying, although I do feel that we should be conscious of the fact that she has a grant for 50% of the salary, and utilization of that just saves us a little bit of money.
Well, I guess that's where I come down to, too. That's ultimately going to play the biggest decision, too. So that's telling me that, that if, if we cast a wider net, and someone really comes back saying, this is someone we have to have, you know, there may be someone out there worth fully funding the position. I'm not saying it's going to happen, I'm just saying casting a wider net is never a bad thing, because we're, this is ultimately not the person we're hiring. This is just a posting, casting the net. You know, if, if all things are equal, you're going to go, or even if they're weighted not extremely one way, you're going to choose the one that you get 50% funding. I'm just saying, what if there was someone that was, that was out there that was a no-brainer that, yeah, we have, and I have no clue that anyone, I doubt that that person exists.
So we can't, because it's going to be based on teacher salary schedule, we can't give any kind of estimate about what the salary position is going to be, can we?
We can, based on, as a specialist. They have an asterisk degree and a specialist. We pay all of our specialists on the same rate.
Okay.
So it's a two 20-day specialist. Like, it would be, we have Karen Freeman, she's a specialist. We have several specialists. It's just another.
And realize, receive a special supplement.
Yeah.
And realize, there are people hired at the tech center all the time that get certified asterisk fact, we know that.
Oh, yeah.
We're, we're looking for that person that can sell ice cubes to an Eskimo.
Well, I think the whole thing, too, is when she said that this person, individual needs to help the CTE teachers. So basically, they're teaching the teachers and helping them set up a simulated workplace, so they ultimately would have to know CTE, and how to set up a simulated workplace as per state code and center guidelines, whatever, so.
That's my, like, my grant, that's what my grant has to do, is that's the part of it, that CTE, is helping work, working the teachers and working with the students. So that's where my part of the job description is, is half of it, and then the other half is that community liaison, which I think is incredibly important, because we don't do enough to brag on ourselves and show our community what we're doing well. And we had, we had an advisory, CTE advisory committee meeting at Liberty High School, the Pro Start students service breakfast, and people from the community who were on that committee, they were like, this is amazing, like, do you want them for your, you know, they can come to do your, you know, next meeting at your place, they have that ability. And so just getting the information out and making sure that the public really understands what a simulated workplace is. And, you know, I was talking with Mr. Rico this afternoon, we have floriculture at Rammert Seabird High School. Well, people get married all the time, and how great would it be if our students could design the flowers for a wedding? I mean, they can do that, and they're going to be way more reasonable, and I don't want to put anything, have anybody out of business, but, because they're obviously very small scale, but it would be really nice if we could get the word out, and that's part of working with those teachers to figure out how to market what they are doing well.
I have a question. I know there's certifications for if you want a CTE certification. So say we had an applicant that had a degree in whatever, and was a great business person, we can apply for a CTE certification for them, correct?
I think so, yes. I just don't know, I think.
Because we've done that with other positions.
I think they would have to be certified for me to put my grant in that.
I'm just saying, after, if we found a great applicant.
I mean, what if you find someone that had a doctorate, and they want a CT, but they ran a business and they have a doctorate, I mean, we say, no, we don't want you, because we've got someone, you know.
CTE.
I'll say it right now, a doctorate is not a business owner made.
That's true.
I can say that right now.
But if they have a doctorate.
But they couldn't certify.
But they could certify in CTE.
They could take a non-qualify test. There's an out there to certify them.
Yeah.
So, that might be another way to look at it.
I would be okay with that, if they could certify as a CTE coordinator, a CTE electorate, or a CTE.
And that's why I'm saying, we should hit the wider net, and then we ask to answer this question then, you know, after, see what you have.
It looks like we'll have something to say.
If it operates like federal funding, they have to be certified first, before you can ever hire them, so.
But we don't know that.
Well, when we dealt with it in personnel before, we hire them, and then we go after their certification. We have to offer them a position. We've dealt with this before, when we were trying to certify the one gentleman for agriculture. We had to hire them first, and then you ask for the position, you have to go get the certification with experience. That's the way that certification works.
Yeah, because we definitely can do that. Certification.
It's a little different, it's federal.
Right, well, it can definitely become certified, that's the difference. We just had a teacher who did that over at, with Deanna Poole.
Yes, Deanna, we hired, and she worked on her certification.
She was for a year. She had a waiver.
Any other discussion?
I'm okay with posting and finding, finding what we can find out about the applicants. I mean, if the applicants aren't successful, I don't want, you know, I don't want them brought before us, if they don't meet the qualifications.
Any other discussion?
There was another position.
No, that's all the personnel agenda.
Did you have something else?
I think the finance position, the new finance position, if we can, like, just get it next morning.
We had a conversation during the retreat about a trainer. So we looked at doing contract with somebody that was already, for our secretaries, and I brought it down, I didn't make it for you all. I just wanted to see how many secretaries we had. We currently have 16 secretaries that either have, that are brand new or less than two years out there. It's not a small number. I had, I had seven, and when I actually looked, there's 16 with less than two years' experience out there. And when I had a group in just the other day, talking, that was one thing they asked. And we were at a school, I was at a school on Monday, and the secretary has one year, she said, I'm drowning, I need support. I don't know how our current finance department can work with those people in the schools. I really don't, not when they're all learning their jobs. So we were looking for a secretary training, that someone that maybe, it has to be somebody that knows current school finance, current school, and I know it's a, it's the same thing, we'll pass it out there, hope that we get somebody that's qualified for the position to work with secretaries. So the thought was, if we did a contract, you would work with somebody that's recently retired. No one out there is interested in that. We've offered it to the ones that have currently retired. We have a secretary in another county that currently retired, they're just not interested, because they can make more money studying two or three days a week than they can contract. So we had a conversation, how do you get this out there and get somebody that can really support our current secretaries in our school offices? Because it is, it is a need. So we thought if we just put it out, executive secretary, you're going to get somebody experienced, because they're going to get to pay, to come in and do that. That's the only way that they're going to do that. And then we're going to see what we get to bring them in to work with the secretaries. If we don't, it's going to be the same thing. If we don't get someone that's really can do the job, I don't think I'll bring it to you for a recommendation. But I, we're going to have to do something to support them. Now, when they're not out in the schools, I want this person to go out. We have a new secretary starting at WI. She's never been in the school, right off the start list. I see this person going out and being with her to open that school and to help her. And then she'll move to any other secretary, just to show them how to do purchase work. It's not the same calling on the phone and saying, how do you put a purchase order in. They need somebody in there to show them the steps to do that, and to work with them.
I notice it said executive secretary.
Slash accountant three.
Slash auditor.
Okay.
What, what does it?
Okay, the reason auditor was added is we have one, is it one or two now in finance with auditor on it, so they can go out and audit the schools. So if it's a current secretary that has experience, she can go out and do audits at the schools. We currently only have one, it's Monty come on, correct? Because the others have left. So we thought that would be a good way to fill that gap, to do the school audit if we need them. So, I mean, that's the concept behind that.
So in, in comparison with the CTE position, it's actually, now, we're, is it a pigeonhole by putting the audit on the end? Since, do you have to have the audit, is there a certification or some test?
They'll have to take a test.
Do they take it before?
As an auditor.
You have to be.
Well, there's a test, like all.
You can come into the position as an auditor. I'm an auditor for my company.
Well, all.
I mean, you can take a certified auditor, of course.
All the, all the service positions that we have all have the test. They have to test for accounting. They have to test for auditor, they have to test for funding.
Do they have to have the audit before they apply or?
Anybody can apply, then they can test, they'll have to pass the test. Have to pass it, they'll go for the, any of them.
So what if we stick, she wants to stick, you don't stick anybody. Somebody ends up fitting in that position, gets in, they're out there, the secretaries, they take the auditors test, and they don't pass.
Well, we wouldn't hire them. We test them.
Oh, you want a quick test? So they're ready to pass before.
Like we do with any service job. Yeah, we can have any service person do it on any job. If they come in and pass the test, they've got the job.
But I was just thinking, you said, be there the first step, and that doesn't, that is the way.
Well, we wanted to have it in place sooner, but I didn't, I mean, we were trying to get somebody contracted, but they're going to need support.
And I'm not from the school system, but I'm thinking, if we, we have always new secretaries.
I have some.
And like I said, I've never worked in the school system, but I would think that if there's not support in, in the school, a principal hires a secretary in there, or they get a secretary, then if there's no support, then it's up to that, then that principal's going double, they're doing their job, and they're trying to teach a secretary how to do their job, and they have to do part of that job, and I just think that, I don't know why we haven't, for the.
We're probably.
Training these secretaries.
Education, probably, and worst training.
Come here, show me how to do it, and.
It's a shame, but I think we.
I think it sucks a lot on the principal, on day one, if you've got a brand new secretary.
Well, it could be an all-time trainer.
And it could be a position after.
You're getting thrown at all.
Yeah, I was just, I was just wondering, because if you were pigeon, pigeonholing that, basically, where, you know, with all three certifications, and I didn't know that you had taken tests after.
And I think, to answer your question a little bit, on service, it's a little different, because they're so un-pigeonholed, meaning it's all seniority.
Right.
So if you don't put that on there, you could have someone that couldn't add two numbers in.
But they passed the accounting board.
We just had the warehouse supervisors, I think, on this one, we're hiring. Now, nobody was in that classification, so everybody that applied for that had to take the warehouse supervisor job test. So they're, yeah. And we actually opened that up a few years ago. We do testing every so often, so if there's a service person out there that wants to take some tests, they can come in and go ahead and pre-take tests. That, you know, we try to make it as open as we can.
So you could have someone that already has the certification.
Oh, yeah, there's, if they've taken the test.
Let me ask this question. Are we allowed to hire based contingent that they have passed the test prior, and then we reimburse?
Service code says that they're, if they apply, they're allowed to test for the position they are.
There's a lot of times.
So they're not eliminated.
Contingent qualifications or contingent testing.
Now, we are going to put preferred on there, that they know Sophie and school finance and school cash line, and we can put it in as preferred, but it's ultimately going to be seniority. That's the way it works. And they pass the auditor stage.
Okay, so these are just, these are just going out?
I was just asking to create it. If we post it, and we do not get someone that can really truly work with our secretary, that's not going to fill that void, then we would not bring that back as a recommendation.
Any other discussion? Not all in his favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Brings us down, no legal disciplinary matters. Board member comments, Mr. Tucker.
Just to thank everyone for being here, especially you folks that have come back. We see you, appreciate that. And with the opening of school coming up here, I have to just pray that all of our students and all personnel, teachers and anybody that's involved, has a safe opening to our school, and for all of us to remember why we're all here.
I just want to thank Mr. Hammer for suggesting that Mr. Tucker and I visit the county office staff and introduce ourselves. That was fun. We didn't make it very far, only down one hallway, but it was nice meeting everybody down that hallway. We enjoyed talking to everyone, and we certainly appreciate them allowing us into their office and, and sharing some information with them and from them. So thank you, Mr. Hammer, and thanks everyone who was very hospitable toward us. And looking for a great school year. I'm excited. I'm also excited, I would like to sometime, at some point, actually get to see our test scores. That's what I'm chomping at the bit at. So hopefully sometime we can get into that sometime. That's it.
I'm for August 15.
Okay.
That's yesterday.
We have gotten, that's what they told us.
They told you that.
Uh huh, we haven't gotten anything.
Mr. Hudson? I'm going to show up y'all tonight. I have a holiday.
Mr. Devana?
No, I just, I echo, you know, the other board members, and wishing everyone a great start to a good school year. And I'd like to thank everyone for everything that they've done to get ready to prepare for the school with new school enrollment as well.
And I guess the only thing I have, I'll, I'll do it on Jimmy's part, there's buses about to run, so slow down. Slow down, watch out, people like to speed around those, and, and remember, the last thing you want to do is, is say that child would be devastating, so just watch out. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Certainly, sir.
All in his favor, say aye.
Aye.
Children of peace, go in peace.